Manager, big hand is on the 12.
Two minutes fast. We can go ahead and start. So commissioners, unless you have anything, I'll go ahead and start.
Only thing I have is from last staff meeting, Commissioner Howell brought up the webinar dues and we did some research and we haven't paid that $50. So do I have consensus to pay $50 to KOC for the webinar?
Please do.
All right.
Please pay that.
All right, done. So commissioners, we have two topics we're going to bring up today. First Kate is going to talk through website management and then second, we're going to have the Sheriff's Office talk about the state taxation warrants and some issues that we're having with that. And so with that Kate, go ahead.
All right, well my part will be brief. I'd like to invite up Chantel and Matt from our ITS department or division and talk about a new content management system, which is our external website and some changes that we would like to roll out with that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to talk about the content management system. We have a couple of purposes and goals that we'd like to point out. The first thing we'd like to do is enhance the end user experience for Sedgwick County dot org. We'd like to increase usability for mobile traffic, improve customer experience. With this new content management system, it embraces web modernization. It actually places us in a better position to change the website in a wide scale versus having to change little by little by little. We also have improved search functionality. This will help with search indexing, trying to find things on the web. The next goal that we have is to provide an adaptable, extensible, and secure platform for managing the web content. The new platform offers greater level of security. We have a better supported platform, which all traffic will be encrypted. We'd like to continue the ADA compliance and we have better error checking tools that we've been using and this new content management system puts us in a better position to use those tools. We'll be partnering with communications to create standards for stakeholders. We will be eliminating inconsistencies with the website. We'd like to empower stakeholders to modify web content regularly. This allows the non-technical user to easily change the website and modify, make changes very easily. We've also added structure that, structure and standards that the end user can just easily plug in and play. We improve the accuracy of the web content and we improve staff efficiency. This next slide, in 2017, 41% of our users were actually from mobile devices. We've also changed, made some enhancement to the menu. On the left side, this is our current site. I'm going to play the video. When we pull down the menu and then we click on one of the tabs, it actually takes us to a landing page versus breaking down the menu. With the new site, it actually just opens up that menu and we can easily get to where we need to go. This next slide is the regular desktop site for the menu. On the left side, we kind of just have a sea of links. It's just the user is going to have to look through, try to find what are they looking for. On the right side, we've kind of made it easier to spot what you're looking for and you can easily go to the drop-down menu and go to where you're looking for. The top slide is the current site and the bottom side is the new content management site. As you can see, the headings kind of pop out more and the font is a little bit easier to read. I'll let you guys take a look at it for just a moment. Do you guys have any questions or concerns? All right. The next steps for this, we would like to go ahead and make this a live change. We can do this honor before Monday and once we go live with it, we'll kind of manage it for a few months and then we'll start working with communications to create standards for the departments and initially like put some of this in their hands to keep modifying their website and keeping the website up to date with new content. We'll start a web advisory board and we'll meet and discuss standards and those kinds of things.
Now you said you were going to make it easier for non-technical users to make changes to the website. Who all has authority to make changes to that?
It'll be similar to how the E-line is. Those site owners for their E-line content, they'll be able to make those changes and those changes will actually go to communications and they'll make the final approval on that and publish it once it's approved.
Okay, so people can't just go in and start changing our website?
Correct.
Okay.
That advisory group that comes together will have a large say in that too. They'll be kind of the process policy owner and they'll discuss, you know, changes that people want to make, but in the end, the POC or the schmee for it is the communications.
Okay, questions? Well, we look forward to seeing what it looks like on Monday morning.
All right, we will go ahead and make that change once that, once we finalize the security steps.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Sheriff's Department is up. So this next, this next topic is on tax warrants and this was something I started researching a few weeks ago based off of some discussion with commissioners and I was pretty surprised at what I found. So I asked the Sheriff's Department and the sheriff who couldn't be here today because he has given testimony up in Topeka, we all met together and he gave us some information that, that is going to be challenging for us. So if you could.
Good morning, everyone. Greg Pollak, Colonel with the Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Forshy will be giving the presentation. It'll be overview of the sheriff's involvement with tax warrants and how we work with the state agencies in the service of those or supporting the Department of Revenue with their overall mission of enforcing tax laws.
Morning, everybody. The Department of Revenue came to us three or four years ago and asked that we start assisting them with some enforcement of the tax warrants. The Department of Revenue actually has their own enforcement agents that are responsible for the collection of the tax warrants that are issued through the Department of Revenue. They have a system set up to where it's, it goes in steps. There's, you know, like your initial tax collectors, then it goes to the next step of people that are a little more forceful, then it goes on into the field agents that it's more enforceable, where they go out and seize property, collect funds and so on. But anyway, they came to us about three years ago and said, will you guys start assisting us with this? They need protection. None of their agents are armed or have any kind of enforcement capabilities other than to seize the money. So this is kind of a background with the civil section with the Sheriff's Office. Talks about our total numbers and how many actual tax warrants we go out and we serve for the Department of Revenue. When I say we serve those, the tax warrants are issued to us. Originally, it was through the district court clerk and what we would do is we would take those out and we deliver those to the people that owe the tax warrants. So we explain to them, on this tax warrant, all we are responsible for is the service, but it gives the numbers of what we actually take out versus the documents we receive. So in 2014, we received 3,883 tax warrants. As a division, we received 52,000 civil papers that came from the courts that we were responsible for service. So there's a significant amount of tax warrants going out there. 2015, numbers dropped a little bit. 2016, as you can see, that goes back up again to 3,966 and we're about 45,000 total documents received into the civil section. 2017, we started to see a problem. There were 1,618 tax warrants issued to us and 43,000 total. In June of 2017, the law changed requiring the state of Kansas to electronically file all tax warrants. It means every attorney, every legal person within the state is required to electronically file every bit of their paperwork with the courts. The Department of Revenue had started to electronically file their paperwork and then they had some sort of a glitch in their system after finding out what the problem was. Anyway, we see a noticeable decline in tax warrants for June of 2017. We would average 350 to 400 a month and all of a sudden, we were starting to get, well as you can see, we got six. So I started communication with the Department of Revenue informing them that we were not getting any tax warrants issued through the courts or we were not having anything delivered to us and started that communication saying, hey, we are not receiving your tax warrants as we normally do for this, so our department can go out and serve those. So in July of 2017, civil enforcement advises they'll be sending us the warrants through the mail and we're provided information on how to do so. They called us and said, what information do you guys need or what documents need to be given to you to be served to the public? We explained how we needed their warrants set up and how we would make the return to the courts. I know I'm talking kind of legal jargon, but by statute, once they deliver the paperwork to us, we are responsible for the service of it per statute and we have to make a return to the courts. So as we get the documents from them, they can't just send us one copy, they have to send us two. So therefore, we have one that we deliver to the public and we have one that we make the return to the courts. So in July, we received 232 tax warrants. We think at that point, the problem's fixed. As we can see, August through October, we received a total of 12 tax warrants. In November and December, we received zero. So we know that there is still a continuation of problem. So I made contact again with the Department of Revenue, letting them know the problem is still continuing. They request to put a printer in the Sheriff's Office and ask that our staff print and sort the warrants. We average eight or 10 pages per packet. When I talk about the packet, that's the items that we take out and deliver. So we have the warrant that's served and the return that has to be made to the courts. At that point, we asked the Department of Revenue what their purpose was by giving us this printer. They basically want us to do their work for them. We requested a deny at that point due to manpower and space to accommodate the amount of tax warrants that are received from the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue is required, just like any other attorney or any other legal entity within the state, is, once those documents are electronically filed, it becomes the problem of that attorney or anybody else to send that information to the Sheriff's Office with payment. However, the Department of Revenue by statute doesn't have to pay us for any service. So the Sheriff's Department's not allowed to charge them anything. In January of 2018, the Department of Revenue advised that the district court clerk will be printing the warrants and physically delivering them to the Sheriff's Office. That is what the clerk was doing prior to the June of 2017 when the warrants were being delivered to us. There's a conference call held with the Department of Revenue Attorney, District Court Administrators and the court clerks and myself. The district court refuses to print the tax warrants for delivery. DOR threatens to send all the unfiled tax warrants to the Sheriff's Office just to have us file them. So there's no resolution found during the call. They again request to put a printer in the Sheriff's Office and a request is denied for the same reason it was denied in December. We don't have the manpower, the facilities to facilitate the amount of tax warrants that they are bringing out. I will tell you that, I think it's Johnson County that was, that when electronic filing started several years ago, they had put out that they were going to accept everything that was electronically filed and as a department, they were going to accept responsibility for the printing of the documents and then the serving of the documents. When talking with them, their numbers are pretty close to what Sedgwick County serves and what comes out of the courts. They said that their operating cost went up, well, they had to add two employees and they had to add two $30,000 printers. And then their operating cost went up between $1,200 and $1,500 a month just for paper and other items that came in. So anyway, January 18, Department of Revenue reports that they have 3,800 tax warrants that they've gone back and identified since June of 2017, saying that they have not been served to the public. They ask if they can send every one of those 3,800 tax warrants to us. I tell them that we do not have the ability with seven-member team to serve the warrants within the state required five-day timeframe. I asked them if there's any other way that we could proceed with getting all these tax warrants out to the public. They request that we send them via certified mail. Well, 3,800 tax warrants at $6.35 apiece, we figured it was going to cost the county about $26,000 to send these certified or the Sheriff's Department. So at that point, I said that there's no way that we're going to be able to do that. We do not, we don't want to accommodate your request. We're asking that you guys take care of this because it was an issue that you guys had with your system in the first place. They said that they'll be sending out all the backlog of tax warrants via certified mail at their cost. They request that we serve approximately 400 backlog tax warrants to residential address. At that point, I agree that we will assist them with getting those items out to the public, essentially. They are still in the process currently of identifying old tax warrants that have not gotten out to the public. We are getting them sporadically delivered to us by the Department of Revenue. It appears that they've got their glitch fixed with their system, where they are at least issuing them to the sheriff for service. So there were some questions on the cost of collecting tax warrants within Sedgwick County from what the Department of Revenue has issued to the public and what it would cost for the Sheriff's Department to go out and collect that state tax warrant money. The tax warrants that you're seeing that are being collected by the Department of Revenue are for income tax, past sales tax, anything that they would collect off of a tax is what goes to the civil enforcement section. Excuse me. We basically took the information from the Sheriff's Office for the current seizures for an eight-to-10-month seizure of what we were doing. The Sheriff's Department's also responsible for any court document that comes out of the courts where a judge has ordered that the Sheriff's Department is to go out and seize money or funds or assets. So anything that we looked at, we said, okay, out of the last eight or 10 months, how many tilt taps have we done, which it means that the department, or I'm sorry, that the state has issued or the attorney has issued a writ or some sort of a legal document to us to go out and collect money from a business or a person. So we, we figured out that the average seizure dealing with the deputies takes a minimum of two hours per court document that comes to us. A mid-range deputy's wage is $33.42 an hour. That includes benefits. Therefore, the cost of personnel to complete a seizure is $66.84. The cost of a marked vehicle averages out to $1.69 per hour. Overhead is $0.21 an hour and mileage is $0.45 an hour. With an average seizure taking two hours, if the seizure was within five miles of the courthouse, it would add an additional $8.38 per seizure. Average seizure collection is $150. That is what we took over the last eight or 10 months of every tilt cap that was issued to the Sheriff's Office, not tax warrants, but just what is issued through the courts that we go out and seize money. So average seizure of $150, without the, at least 50% of the money seized would be needed to be obtained by the Sheriff's Office, even break in, break even for the collection of the tax warrants. Does that answer your guys' question about the tax warrants and the amount that's going out, some of the issues that we've had with them?
So do we get reimbursed by the Department of Revenue?
We receive no reimbursement whatsoever to Sedgwick County or the Sheriff's Office from the Department of Revenue. Statutorily, we cannot charge them for the service of their documents. They say that the money comes back to the county government via state tax dollars that's collected. However, by statute, we are not allowed to collect any money from them for even the service of the documents. And that is, any government agency within the state of Kansas can have any legal document served by the sheriff of that county and it is without cost.
Okay, and this is required by statute that we have to do this?
Yes. Once it's delivered to the sheriff, we are required by statute to go out and serve the civil tax warrants. Any other, anything that comes from the government, we issue subpoenas from the district attorney's office, the city of Wichita. We do evictions for the city of Wichita. All that comes at no cost because they're a government agency. I mean, we serve, you know, levies, we serve anything that's connected to any kind of government, so like the Winfield Hospital, since they're sponsored by the city of Winfield, any document that comes to us meets exemption, so we can't serve it, or we can't charge for, excuse me.
So what's the total cost per year of providing the service to this?
For the Department of Revenue?
No, what's, what's, what's your budget that comes out of Sedgwick County funding that you have to, we have to come up with as Sedgwick County taxpayers to pay for all of this service?
I can't answer that question. That's, that's somebody you'll have to ask the sheriff or the Colonel about.
We'll send that information over to you so that you're aware of the, the amount that the judicial division, there is some revenue that is generated based on the service of documents. So there is some offset based on statutory changes that occurred in 2018. Initially, when the sheriff would go out and serve papers, the original was a dollar per paper, then it was $5 and now it's up to $15. And the last, this last change statutorily happened in 2008 or 2009 where that increase went in those dollars. And we received a lot of resistance throughout the state when those increase proposes were, brought forth the legislation. So it was quite an effort during that timeframe to even get the increase. And regionally, we're way beyond, are way lower than anyone else. Our surrounding states are charging anywhere from $30 to $40 for the same service that we provide throughout the state of Kansas.
Does the taxpayer pays that?
Taxpayer, yes. Yeah, like I said, some of it's offset. If it's a, if it's a private issue, attorney has two choices. They can either employ the services of the Sheriff's Department or they can hire their own civil process server at a, at a much greater cost. Statutorily, we don't have a, we don't have a choice if those courts, if the court issues that paper and it requires it to be served, that is the duty and the function of the sheriff.
Well, it's too late to do anything legislative this year, I think, because turnaround is coming up pretty quick, isn't it? But is this something, we need legislative change next year?
You know, it definitely needs to be considered on a, you know, something that needs to be looked at on an annual basis, but I can just tell you that, you know, all the work that was done in 2008 was quite a bit, quite a bit of work and the resistance that we get from the other entities that don't want to pay the additional, the additional cost. But I think it's worthy of our time to continue to pursue it and look at the increases.
Okay, well, I don't want state pushing down requirements on us, it costs taxpayers zero money. We may have to pursue something in the future. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Well, the status right now is that the state's going to send out registered letters so we don't have to serve all those.
Correct.
And then the ones that you do get, I forget how many you sent.
About 400.
And those are the result of can't find an address or they, they come back to them?
No, the 400 that we agreed to serve is actually going to be businesses located as a, at a residential address. So every one of those, I have to have an employee drive that location, get out of a car, try to knock on the door, see if we can find somebody. Then if not, we have to serve it to the, to the property itself. If we residentially serve it, tack it to the door, which means my deputy has knocked on the door, nobody's there, we tape it to or rubber band it to the residence, we then have to come back and mail a notification by statute that we have left process at the house. So we endure a .32 processing fee if we do not get anybody at the residence to answer the door. So, and I can't tell you exactly what the percentage is of that, but that is just, the 400 documents that we got is just the, the old documents that were discovered that were not sent to us for service in the first place in between June and December. And we're still responsible for all the new tax warrants that are coming in for all the service. So we're getting the new ones that have been filed in 2018 and moving forward and then we're still getting the old ones.
But, but these warrants are for income, the link with income tax?
It's for income tax, it's for sales tax, it's for anything, there's so many different ones. I mean, there's personal income tax, there's sales tax, there's business withholding taxes. It's, it encompasses a, a large amount, I think. I mean, it's, and I can't tell you exactly what every one of them say, but it'll tell you like 2014 income tax or 2017 sales tax and usually a broken down month by month. So, and, and some of it, some of them can be a pretty hefty amount, so.
Well, so in my talks with Secretary Williams and his chief of staff, and I think I told you this, Mike, they're willing to help maybe even give us enough money to hire a full-time employee. Secretary Williams has told me, and so has Matt Billingsley, they'd be happy to come down here, meet with the sheriff, meet with the manager and figure out what, what would be a good solution to this problem because they need them served. The state of Kansas has multi-millions of dollars out in outstanding taxes that they're desperately trying to collect and they have legislation in the system that, that didn't make it out of committee last year about broadening who can deliver these subpoenas, but people want to keep them with the Sheriff's Departments and so, and their staff's worried. They had one of their employees shot multiple times in the tag office, or the revenue office next to the tag office in Twin Lakes. So they're really in a, they have quite a conundrum going on. But I think the next step for us is, Secretary Williams and his chief of staff said they'd be happy to come down here and try to, you know, mediate a solution. I, I think that should be the next step.
Okay, well, that sounds reasonable. I just don't want us to pick up all the cost of doing the business for the state.
I think they understand that and I think Johnson County spoils them by, by doing this all and has for years, but our Sheriff's Department has a lot more activity than the Johnson County Sheriff's Department does, probably by a considerable margin. So we don't have that luxury, but I know that they want to find a solution to this. And as the sheriff knows and I'm sure the sheriff's deputies, the Department of Revenue's been very helpful in trying to find solutions for real ID for inmates and, and other endeavors that they've been working on that, that I've been working as a conduit between the department and the sheriff, between the Department of Revenue and the Sheriff's Department. So I think we are building a, a good relationship with them, but this next step, I think, needs to be at management level. That way, we can streamline it and Matt Billingsley is, Sam's chief of staff said he'll, he'll come down anytime. We just need to give him that a week's notice.
Good. Anything further?
Commissioner, who was that, Matt who?
Billingsley.
Billingsley.
And I'll give you his contact information if you want it and Secretary Williams. And the good thing about Secretary Williams is he lives in Wichita. In fact, a few of us were with him yesterday morning. Commissioner Underwood and Commissioner Howell and I were with Secretary Williams yesterday morning, so he's very accessible.
Well, good. Anything else?
I was just curious, do you have, do you have a specific staff that serves these warrants or do you use normal sheriff's deputies in their normal beat?
I have specific staff. I, I mean, I have eight commissioned personnel, I'm sorry, I have eight private process servers which are a non-commissioned personnel and I have four commissioned. The issuance of the tax warrants are the civilian side, which is the eight people. I said I had seven because I have one that's temporarily assigned to a different area right now doing some updates for warrants. But normally, I have eight civilians and I have four commissioned. My four commissioned ones are the ones that are responsible for all of the issuance of all the protection from abuse and protection from stalking orders, which vary between 350 and 400 a month. Again, we have a statutory requirement that those have to be served within a certain timeframe when issued to us and then plus, we have victims out there that need the protection. So, but those four are also the ones that are responsible for going out and collecting any court documents or orders from the courts that have ordered us to go out and collect any funds or money. I use a commissioned person for that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, in addition, all deputies are trained in how to provide service of papers and there are occasions during the evening hours where a, a beat deputy would be required to assist the citizen. to assist a citizen with the service of a paper, and that usually falls into our PAF and PAS categories. A lot of times, we don't deal with the, the other civil issues in the evening, but there are times when they have to be served after hours, just because they're having no luck during the daytime.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
This is one, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it up in this forum, is wanting to get the information out there quickly to all five commissioners, but also, we need a quick solution for this. So, I think now we're kind of set up for that next meeting, and I think in the end, we'll be able to solve this one. But it's a statewide issue, it's not just, you know, specifically Sedgwick County, but, but certainly, we have the most business, so we need, we need to solve this.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Thank you, appreciate the update. Chief Miss Manager, anything else?
I'd say, Commissioner.
Very good. Anyone else around the table have anything today? Any of the electeds? Nothing? Anyone else in the room have anything? Very good. Nice board meeting?
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I hear this rumor that we're looking at buying a, a building for the Kansas African American Museum.
We're not looking at buying a building, we're looking at how to, we can assist them in finding a building for them to buy.
Okay. But were we looking at buying a building, this Sunflower State Bank Building, as, as the Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
There wasn't any talk about that?
The Sunflower Bank Building is one that they're looking at for them to possibly purchase.
Okay.
I can come and brief you on everything that's going on so far, if you'd like me to.
Well, I'd like to have a public discussion of this. If, if my, if Commissioner O'Donnell was involved in this, and supportive of this, and this is another, I mean, the Sunflower State Building was one of the buildings he tried to push us to buy for an administration building. Now I'm here, and this is happening again. It's not on our CIP list.
But we're not looking at us buying a building.
Huh?
We're not looking at us buying a building.
That wasn't put out there, that wasn't the suggestion?
The Sunflower Bank Building is one that we're looking at as a possible location to relocate the African American Museum, but they, a lot depends on their board of directors, and they need a meeting so that we can find out what they want to do.
We need to have a public discussion of this.
We will, since we know which direction we're going.
I want you and the staff to know that anytime Commissioner O'Donnell initiates any, anything like this, I want to know about it. I don't want to be kept in the dark, okay? This is another example.
But Commissioner O'Donnell hasn't been involved. He's sat in the meetings, but he has not been doing anything that I haven't been doing, or any discussions that we've had with the Mark McCormick.
Why are we having any discussions with him? It's not in the CIP. We do need to talk about it, because...
But we're not buying a building, so it doesn't need to be in a CIP.
Well, I understand. But why would we even have any discussions about it?
Because right now, the African American Museum is in Sedgwick County property.
I get that.
And it is not an adequate location, and so we're looking at other options for them, but it's up to their board to decide what they want to do, and then we'll see how, and we're providing support to them all along.
I understand that. You understand my concerns. Don't, Mr. Chairman, let yourself get drawn into something that, that's inappropriate. Because I'm just telling you. You understand the rationale, we don't need things like this going on. And every time I hear about it, I'm going to talk about it publicly, because we need transparency, okay?
We do, but right now, the decision is not ours at this point.
I get that. But I'm getting the sense that just, I'm going to be transparent about it, and I want to know about it.
Okay. And I can come tell you that everything that's transpired up to this point, I'd be glad to do that.
Well, I'd like to know why it wasn't included in this all along the beginning.
Because it's not our decision yet. It's up to the board of directors of the African American Museum on which direction anyone goes.
I got, I got you.
Okay? Anything further? See, none, or adjourned? Thank you.